Good evening, everybody. It is now 6:58 and I'd like to... 7:00 PM according. David's 7:00 PM, ISO 6:58. But I'd like to welcome you to the September 13th, 2016 meeting of the McMinnville City Council. Just a couple of things to remind you of that tonight's session is being broadcast and recorded broadcast from McMinnville Community Media on our two McMinnville, our two McMinnville Community Media channels on both Comcast and Frontier. And also it is being livestreamed courtesy of KLYC Radio. So that being said, we said we ask you if you have a cellphone that you silence it now. And if you have to take a call or make a call or do any texting, we ask for the courtesy of others that you please go out in the lobby to do so. So that being said, what I will do is I will ask Counselor Manke to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So Kelly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kelly. At this time before we go on, it's a great honor that I have a proclamation to read for the diaper need awareness week. So who's going to be accepting that proclamation tonight? Come in and I will come up and I will come up to you. So you can come up here and your ladies can come up front here. There we go. And I'll put one of you on each side of me.
Perfect.
If you'd like to. Okay, this is the proclamation for the diaper need awareness week. Whereas diaper need, the condition of having a sufficient supply of clean diapers to ensure that infants and toddlers are clean, healthy, and dry can adversely affect the health and welfare of infants, toddlers, and their families. And whereas national surveys report that one in three mothers experienced diaper need at some time while their children are less than three years of age, and 48% of the families delay changing a diaper to extend their, of their supply. And whereas the average infant or toddler requires an average of 50 diaper changes per week over three years. And whereas diapers cannot be bought with food stamps or WIC vouchers, therefore obtaining a sufficient supply of diapers can cause economic hardship to families. And whereas a supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for infant and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and qualify early education, qualified early education programs. And whereas the people of McMinnville recognize that addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunity for the state's low-income families and can lead to improved health for families and their communities. And whereas McMinnville is proud to be the home to various community organizations that recognize the importance of diapers in helping provide economic stability for families and distribute diapers to poor, to poor families throughout various channels. Now, therefore, I, Richard L. Rick Olson, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim the week of September 26th through October 2nd, 2016, as diaper need awareness week in the City of McMinnville and encourage the citizens of McMinnville to donate generously to diaper banks, diaper drives, and those organizations that distribute diapers to families and need to help alleviate diaper need in McMinnville and environs. And where, and witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed this 13th day of September, 2016. So ladies, I'd like to give this to both of you if you'd like to come in and hold it and hold up. Would one of you like to say anything?
I'm Anne Stevenson. I'm the chairman of the diaper committee for a family place, an emergency family relief nursery. We also do run the diaper bank and we will be having a rather large diaper drive starting September 26th in conjunction with this. And it will be going all the way through the month of October. You may drop off clean diapers, please only clean diapers, at many of the banks in town. It's called the Banks for the Bank Diaper Drive. And most of the banks in town will be providing a spot for drop-off. So we encourage everybody to follow Mayor Olson's proclamation here and donate some diapers to us.
And we do appreciate all of the efforts and the recognition that this provides for us through the city. Thank you very much. We distributed about 40,000 diapers last year, emergency diapers only, to families across Deham Hill County. So it really is a need, that need really is out there. And accessing the diaper bank helps connect these families to other services. We follow up and find out exactly what's going on. So we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne and Elaine. And I think it's a very good cause and we're glad we could do the proclamation for you tonight. Thank you very much. Anne, thank you very much. Okay, this is a time that the council likes to set aside for an invitation to citizens for public comment. And what I can do is I'll ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak to us. There are some things we cannot talk about, or we ask you to wait till a little bit later. If a topic is already on our agenda, we wait for you to, for that agenda item. If the city's currently in a matter of litigation, we cannot discuss anything in that litigation. If it's a quasi-judicial land use matter or a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date that the city is aware of, we cannot discuss those. So is there anybody who would like to speak to the council on anything that is not on our agenda tonight? Once again, come on up, Des, and you'll have to, you'll have to sign in and everything, but come on up and sign in, even though we know who you are.
Actually, if it's okay, I can use the PD address. I'm not comfortable giving out my...
Sure, you can use the PD address. And then if you pull the mic a little bit closer so we can hear you.
My name is Scott Fessler. I actually work for McMinnville Police Department. I'm the detective sergeant there. I'm actually here just to say a quick thank you to one of my team members, Detective Sam Elliott. He is going to be moving on to a new chapter in his life. And so I just wanted to go over a little, some milestones of his career. He and I have been at the police department for almost the same amount of time. He's worked for McMinnville Police Department for over 15 years. And during that time, just some of the highlights, there's, trust me, not enough time to go over all of them. He was Employee of the Year during that time. He has been, or he was, a longstanding president of the E-Board and assisted in getting through terrible contract negotiations in some difficult times. But also, in my opinion, was thought of as kind of a pillar in those conversations. Very reasonable person, thoughtful person, and was always, his opinion was always valued. For many years, he's been an EVOC instructor, which is Emergency Vehicle Operations Instructor for the police department, which means he's taught us, officers, in safe driving practices and tactical driving techniques for many years. Been instrumental in that, has always done a great job. Early in his career, obviously, you know, when we're hired, we all start out as patrol officers. So that's kind of where we cut our teeth, is on patrol. And he did that for many years before rotating up into the detective section for about four years. That was a handful of years ago. Rotated back to patrol for a few years. And then, to my pleasure, rotated back in to detectives. I've been the detective sergeant since January of 2014. And fortunate enough to have him come back in in May of 2015. And he's been there ever since. I can't even begin to... It's a little tough for me, so sorry. I'm here to thank him for his service, years of service to the city, the police department, and this city. Thank him for his personal friendship and wish him and his family nothing but the best in his next chapter. He'll be sorely missed. Fortunately, there's a bit of a silver lining that he'll be working within the county. So we'll cross paths and still get to end up on cases together, I'm sure of it. But he's been a huge asset for the police department and probably one of the, I thought of as probably one of the best employees that the police department's had maybe ever. Ranks up there in the top when it comes to people's opinions of what it means to be a police officer and do a quality job. So I just wanted to share that real quick. He's moving on. We'll have a couple more weeks with him. And then he'll be moving on to that next chapter. So thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I know we'll all miss Sam. I know what job he's done for you and done for the city. At least he's staying locally and we'll be able to use some of his talents locally. So thank you, Scott.
Definitely. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the council about anything that is not on our agenda tonight? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Commissioners, there was, or councilors, there was a consent agenda in your packet. Your consent agenda consisted of the minutes, the May 24th, 2016 dinner and regular meetings, and a resolution number 2016-63. And that was approving a contract with WFG or Western Financial Group for municipal advisory services. Councils, do we have to pull, need to pull anything off of the consent agenda tonight? If not, I'll entertain a motion that we accept the consent agenda? So moved by Council President Jeffries, second by Counselor Manke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that the consent agenda passed unanimously. That will take us to appointments tonight. We do have an appointment tonight, and that's an appointment of a new city recorder. I know this is something that myself, in the eight years I've been mayor, I've always been anxious to get one of these on board. But what I'll do at this time is turn it over to Counselor Hill to talk a little, a little bit about this. So Scott?
Yes, we, during this year and in the budget planning process, we have taken an opportunity to have a full-time human resources director. And Rose is fulfilling that responsibility with us. With that separation, there was a need to take a look at the city recorder, which Rose was doing a lot of those functionings. And then we were looking at a slash legal assistant to help our city attorney. And so we looked at our city charter and determined that we would come and have a city recorder slash legal assistant position. We had an opportunity to, to put out for that position, had 15 respondents to that, which we narrowed down to five. And we had a first set of interviews with those individuals. Of the five that we interviewed, I think three of them were in-house and two of them were from outside.
Seven initially.
Oh, seven initially. So we had three and then four. And so after those set of interviews, we narrowed that down to three individuals that we brought in for a second interview. And we chose Melissa Grace. And there's someone out at the Air Museum with the same name, but it's a different individual, is working as the assistant to the superintendent of schools in Newburgh and has significant experience in the form of city government. Prior to coming to Newburgh, was down in Texas and had worked her way up to the same type of job title of, of city recorder there. Has great experience in the functioning of the municipal code and the digitizing of records. Those are things that we really need. And so she'll bring a lot of expertises in from that perspective. She will be completing her Masters of Public Administration, which gives her the broad education and a lot of drive and desire to grow within our organization. The interviewing panel found her to be the perfect fit for working with our existing staff, the leadership, and the expertises that we were looking for. So I think I'll just kind of leave it there. We're, we're excited to, to add to staff and bring some expertises to the table.
Thank you, Scott. Turnover, Martha, any comments on your, on your behalf?
No, it was a good candidate pool. As Counselor Hill said, 15 individuals applied and went through two solid round of interviews. And all three of the individuals we interviewed at, at the end could have done the job. It was, it was just a matter of finding that right individual, the right fit. And I really appreciate the skill and professionalism that I think Melissa's going to bring to us. And we're excited to have her on board starting in October.
Thank you. And I'll turn it over to City Attorney, David, any comments from you?
No, I think it's been said. I would simply look for a motion from the council to appoint her so we can get started.
Okay, before we do that appointment, some of you may be wondering for this position, since it is a recorder slash legal assistant, why it's coming in front of the council when a lot of our positions at the management supervisory level do not come in front of the council. It just so happens by our charter, the recorder portion of the position or the recorder, it is required by our city charter that the, it is considered an appointed officer position. And that position being as such, needs to be approved by a vote of the city council. So normally those type of administrative positions won't come in front of us, but because of our city charter, this one needs approval of the, of the council. So I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion by Counselor Hill, a second by Counselor Manke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. And so we'll consider Melissa appointed by the council. And David, when's her first day going to be?
Uh, October 3rd.
October 3rd. So we welcome her, her on board. So that being said, then that takes us to old business. And our old business, we have a presentation for a, for, from Way Zero on Bag It Better. And of course, it's glad to have you guys back. And we really have always looked forward and appreciated the partnership between Zero Waste McMinnville and the McMinnville City Council. And a lot of what you're doing really goes out to what the council, I know when I was elected mayor, what the council decided to do years ago in making sure the city could be more sustainable. And so as part of that program that, I know you guys are continuing to do outreach with some of the smaller businesses about using carryout bags. And so for that, we look forward to having your presentation. So if all three of you can sign in and, and state your name for the record, please.
I'll state my name first and then sign in. I'm Steve Iverson, 1033 Southwest Courtney Laney Drive, McMinnville.
I'm Beth Dell, 635 Northwest 9th Street, McMinnville.
And I'm Ramsey McPhillips, 13,000 Southwest McPhillips Road here in McMinnville.
Okay, and if we can get you guys as you talk, so the audience behind you can hear, if we can get you to pull the microphones a little bit more closer. So whoever's going to start off, you guys start off.
I am. And I'm going to take this opportunity really quickly, I know we're here to talk about the bag, but to pat ourselves on the back a little bit about what happened this summer with all of our events. As you know, our goal is to turn the city into the first city town in Oregon to become officially zero waste, which is by definition meaning that 90% of our waste will either be recycled, reused, and not end up in a landfill or an incinerator. So we've been working all of the events for two years. So we have one-year's events compared to a second-year's events heading to that all-important 90% diversion rate. And we're happy to report that without exception, I think all of the events went up. And two very large events actually now may declare themselves zero waste. That is the IPNC went up to 95%, meaning only 5% of that huge event's waste ended up in a landfill. It was a Herculean event of basically one man standing in a dumpster for three days with a bunch of hornets, making sure that his people made mistakes, that they were corrected. And then teams of volunteers really working really hard and very well with the organization. And then the other event, not in McMinnville, but something that we work on is the Bounty of the County event. Many vendors go there with their food and, and wine. And that was the second year that that was into the 90s as well. And then thirdly, the farmer's market. Last year was around 80%, I think, and 72% average. This year, we're averaging above 80% and some of the days we've been into the 90s. So we're really excited about the success, not knowing how this was going to roll out over the 10 years, but it seems to be moving forward. Lastly, in that degree, we took on the county fair. Obviously, it's a county event, but in the city. I was cowering the whole time in the corner because, as you know, they run a very tight ship. And I'm not always everyone's favorite, and that was sort of my baby. But I'm happy to report that I didn't piss anyone off and that we learned a ton of information and know exactly next year what to do to make that event adhere to our 90% soon. So thank you for allowing me to take that time to lot ourselves.
Ramsey, before you finish up, I have one question. Being you mentioned about IPNC has now made that threshold, making that threshold as part of their advertising marketing, do they get to use a zero waste or some kind of logo and insignia as part of their marketing effort?
They will, and they are. And we've met with them just recently in that regard, hoping that they are going to couple McMinnville and Zero Waste and their effort in their marketing, which, as you know, goes around the world. So it's a really, really incredible opportunity to spread the word. And there, we're getting down to the minutia, you know, that we're not done yet. We're talking about every toothpick for next year. So they're really receptive and great.
Thank you, Ramsey.
So as you know, to quickly update you and remind you of where we're at with Bag It Better, we chose a name that was positive and forward rather than banning the bag. We were, have worked hand-in-hand really well with Martha to canvass this community to find out if they were receptive, which actually meant going to the, at first, the big box stores and finding out what their opinion and effort and regulations within their corporate structures, what they felt. So we did that. We found out that it seems very positive. And then Martha went ahead and basically on her own, although with our help of providing the ordinance from the four other cities in Oregon that have already done this, Corvallis, Ashland, Eugene, and Portland, to craft up an ordinance, which you have certainly in front of you. And we're here tonight. I'm just sort of the Vanna White figure, as you know of this organization. I really don't have the real facts and figures. Beth is going to tell you about us going to the smaller stores here in McMinnville. And then also a tour we took of Corvallis, a very thorough tour, asking the big box stores and the smaller stores what it's like to be a city and what problems they have arisen and if they like it, if it's successful. And she's also going to show you the bags, that, the different kind of bags that are offered and what options there are. And then we're going to move to Mr. Fancy Pants here, Steve Iverson, who is the keeper of all the facts. And we suspect that you'll have some questions. And those are pretty much directed at Steve, who really is keeping note of all that. So I'm going to literally be Vanna White and show you the bags as Beth begins her discussion of what she found in Corvallis and the bags.
Should we start with the bags then?
Why don't you talk about the smaller stores here in McMinnville and Corvallis?
We visited 13 convenience stores in McMinnville in early summer. And we were looking for their exact size, which can be, to decide if they were a small enough store that we might exempt them or not. And, and we weren't sure how that was going to roll. So we were finding out how many full-time employees each one had. And 10 is kind of the cutoff between the small stores and the big stores. And we don't have any convenience stores with 10 full-time employees. We had a couple with eight, and then it trickled down almost every other number. So we will go back to those stores once we get rolling and talk some more about their, their anticipation of what's going to happen and how we can support them and what concerns they have. So they'll, they'll have a second round from us. Couple days ago, we went off to Corvallis and we went to about 15 stores, all sizes. And we were asking the manager or the clerks, if that was the only ones we could talk to, how things were going in Corvallis. And it was very interesting. I have to say that the main theme that came across from everybody was it's a little bumpy in the beginning. People are just a little off, how am I going to do this? I don't have reusable bags. But it starts to smooth out pretty soon. Now, they're heading into their third year pretty soon. And almost, I'd say 75% are saying, it's fine, it's going to work. We've moved on. You know, we can manage this. Change is hard, but maybe this is worth it. And, and in the beginning, probably 50% of the people were, were okay with it. They, this, this has got to be done, let's do our part, get, get going here. Just some stories to go along here. They were saying customers still have trouble remembering their bags, but clerks are seeing more of those reusable bags come and go. They're also seeing people just carry out a few items in their hands, no bag, we don't need it. And that's it, that's a good sign. And no cart either. One customer was very, very unhappy with, when Ramsey was interviewing, she was missing her bags for pet cleanup duty. And how was she going to manage with none of these plastic bags available? And he reminded her that a lot of the stores recycle and you can just go over there and help yourself to those bags that are sitting in bins, and she can use them for that. One manager mentioned the parking lot's cleaner now. One manager said before plastic checkout bags were banned, only about 20 or 25% of people asked for bags, and that's even a little less now already. Some of the clerks feel bad when they get attacked by customers, who are especially grumpy. And we've already thought about that. We've thought about flyers that could be there. We've thought about us taking turns talking to customers. That's not very frequent, but it's something that we'll, we'll be on the lookout for. One store we interviewed had banned plastic bags for, for 10 years now. And they were all doing fine. And of course, they won't have any bumps in the road. They've, they like it that way and it's working fine. One resale clothes store uses a large compostable grocery bag that costs five cents, the paper one, and they use it to stamp their name on. So it's a, a brand that they can, you know, get their brand out on their bag. Safeway charges 25 cents for their four-point mill bag, and that's a very sturdy bag.
Well, this is plastic. It's still something you can buy, you can reuse, it's 25 cents. And you'll notice it's a thickness, so this is above the flimsy thickness that normally you get today. So this would be exempt in McMinnville. If someone wanted to have, this would pretty much be the only type of plastic bag. It would exist in McMinnville after the ban because it's thicker and people are being charged for it.
Did you say four mil?
Yeah.
Four mil. So pass that down the line if they can feel that.
I know this seems a little outrageous, but we are talking about bags, so here you go. This is your one chance.
It's very thick.
One manager brought up, well, aren't we cutting down more trees now? And we used his comments to have a friendly discussion about, you know, talking about composting and looking at a bigger picture. And at least trees do compost where plastic doesn't. So we also took a quick survey outside the, the Buy Mart in Corvallis. And in 15 minutes, 18 people left the store carrying items in their hand, one, two, three, four, small items. Five people left the store with bags. Two people had...
Paper bags, right?
Yes, paper bags. And two people had reusable bags. So let's see, what other bags have you got there?
I can just go through these.
Okay. Okay.
So, just logo options, this is obviously from Winco. Winco, as you know, presently gives you a money map when you bring your cloth bags in three cents. And so, it was very curious for us to go on the net and how they thought, give me three cents, charge me five cents, and they said that they didn't really have any problem with it. The manager himself was very into the whole green, and obviously, we have the Winco, and then he showed us that this is a dollar fifty-eight. So, they're making a little money, and obviously, they're bringing it really well, so that's not a treat for the McMinnville stores to do some extra branding, because this is going to go out, as opposed to going out on our freeways. This is a fourteen-cent bag you can buy at Albertson's, so it's not far off the five cents, it's reusable. That was the cheapest one we could find. It doesn't have their logo, it's questionable whether it can be washed.
It does tear. I wanted to see if it would actually tear.
Rick, don't work out at the gym anymore, okay?
You have a logo, it's important. So, those are the screens.
And then, that's the two-point-two-five-mill bag, which is clearly thinner than the four-mill bag, and not as reusable.
So, here's another logo bag that...
That bag the store had been using already, and they didn't, they're not going to change anything, they're just going to go ahead and keep using that bag.
So, that's basically cheating.
Well...
If that's...
Well...
It's below the four-mill, because the ordinance is same. That would be...
Corvallis ordinance requires two-point-two-five-mills for a plastic bag, which is that bag. So, that store was already carrying the two-point-two-five-mill bag, so they can just keep doing that. We recommend the four-mill standard, because it's much more reusable. It will encourage reuse, and it will last longer.
And of course, this is a standard five-cent bag that we are going to be in the ordinance, so requiring people, or offering to people to the stores, and this one doesn't have a logo on it, and so people can obviously put their logo on it. One, the notion is that this is generally considered from Weyerhauser or International Paper, according to Northwest, this is an industry, the plastic industry is not here making plastic bags, but there are obviously, also in the ordinance, these guys have to be forty percent recycled, so fifty percent is coming, presumably, by a tree grown here in Oregon or something like that. And as I noted, they just, if you just need to do is just make, pad and stamp this, or go all the way to two.
This is a last container. Safeway, here in town, sells these for a dollar fifty, they're right up at the checkout, so you can just load up cans and take them to your car, and that's very reusable, it's quite sturdy and good for lots of purposes.
So, Steve is going to talk about what will happen, you pass the ordinance, and between then, what would be Earth Day, 2017, April 22nd, when there actually is the first day that people are going to a store and having this new procedure?
It's customary that the council will vote on an ordinance and then give it a six-month grace period until it's actually enforced. That six months is very valuable, because then you start doing public outreach and education to get the public involved and to let them know it's coming, and to give them options for how to handle their goods. And we plan to assist the city in that outreach. We know we're going to have to do particularly strong outreach to the small stores, the convenience stores, because their clients aren't going to like it as much as the bigger stores. And so, we need to work with the stores, the store owners, and with the customers. And we have seen examples of some of the things that other cities have done, they post signs at stores in the parking lots or on the walls of the stores. Did you bring your bags? Don't forget to wash your bags, because you're using reusable bags now. Or Bag It Better, use our logo statement, and we can come up with better examples of One thing that Mayor Olson noticed, I think, in a store in another state, was that this store had a bin of reusable bags that customers had kind of donated to the cause, and that if a customer comes to the store and has forgotten the bag, they can take it out of the bin, sort of with the understanding that they're going to return the bags when they're done with them. That's a great idea, we could promote that here in McMinnville. A thing that Corvallis tried in their kickoff period was to give the stores a chance to promote their logo bags at a discount, to get people involved, get them starting to stockpile these bags, give them a good price on them. That's another thing that we could sample here and see how that might work. Something that Forest Grove, Forest Grove, by the way, now is the fifth city in Oregon that's passed the ordinance, I don't think theirs has been, has gone into the enforcement phase yet, they're in the rollout phase, but they have raised money to give each family a reusable bag. That's another concept, I really, I think we all really like that concept, and we'd like to try that here, try to raise money so that we can give each family, each of the twelve thousand families here in McMinnville, a reusable bag to get them started on the program. So, those are just some ideas on how we would see the rollout occurring.
Okay, Rick, let's start with, any questions, Larry? Let's start with you down there.
Well, it appears that you've spent some time doing your homework, and we all realize it's the educational process to get us people used to packing bags. Basically, you're allowing, you're setting a base standard for the type of bag, but you're allowing about any type of bag that meets those specifications, is that, do I understand that right?
Right, and that's in consultation with recology. As you know, we're really anxious to see commercial composting, to make sure that the bags that go into use are compostable, as well as cheap and durable, et cetera, et cetera. And once again, we're not reinventing the wheel here. Obviously, the, one of the main functions of this ordinance would be to get rid of plastic bags, so that the transfer station that is going to be having a MRF recovery, material recovery facility, will have less plastic bags clogging up all of their mechanisms and floating around and trashing their facility. It's a huge component that's really going to be advantageous, a byproduct of this ordinance, particular to this city. Not everyone has a transfer station.
Well, I agree with you, because these flimsy plastic bags that we get most of the time at stores are a pain.
Yeah.
And they blow all over the place, you know, if, once they get loose, so I'd be thrilled to see those disappear.
Yeah, just sort of anecdotally, I recently took a one-inch tube of PVC, and I slammed it down into my stream to take a core sample of the stream, which is where you know it is, and when I took the core sample out, it's a striation of plastic bags that have settled in the stream, that have blown, you know, out of our use into the soil. So, it's not just a little inconvenience, it's really affecting the environment locally.
Thank you.
Good, Kelly.
So, there would be a six-month basic time period to use up all your flimsy plastic bags that you have stored away in your closet somewhere? Because I do use them, reuse them, till they fall apart, obviously. No, I love this idea, I know it's going to be hard for me to adjust to that, I just really do, but I applaud your efforts, I think it's a good thing.
One of the, one of the things that was apparent is that when this happens, we are all just going to be using paper bags or no bags. It really just gets rid of plastic bags. So, there's still the options, it's not like we're all going cold turkey here, and there are small paper bags, sometimes for sundries that, you know, can be used as well. So, and it is amazing watching people at the stores come out in Corvallis without a bag, and there is nothing more zero waste than when you eliminate something, rather than have to do something like recycle it, or compost it, or throw it away. So, that behavioral change brought on by this ordinance is really great.
Good, Kelly. Kevin?
I really appreciate that you guys are bringing forth this idea, but also really carrying the weight on this. You know, we have our support, and it's just amazing the work that you've put into this and your, and your leadership in the community, it's just been phenomenal, and I like all the ideas of trying to give support for these businesses, as well as the patrons, you know, having the bins for, you know, grab a bag, leave a bag kind of thing, I think that's really wise, and just keep up the good work, appreciate it.
Thank you, Kevin. Let's, Alan, let's go down to you.
Yeah, I really appreciate your leadership in this, too. The six-month grace period has really hit home with me, I thought that's a great idea. And the process, step by step, that you've gone through and built up to this point that you're at now, that there could be an ordinance possibly passed, has been really good and worthwhile and educational. And so, my wife and I have already started doing this elimination of the plastic bags, the non-reusable plastic bags, and feels good, so.
Well, great. We have tried extremely hard to get a good sense of the community and avail ourselves of the schedule that we've proposed. I don't think there's anyone here tonight in great opposition, and we certainly ask people to come, this was their chance, or other chances, to let it be known, whereas other cities have had whole, you know, six executives with briefcases from the plastic industry showing up from, you know, Arkansas to stop this, and it just, it's just not happening. This community seems really embraced and ready to happen, I just, it's, you know, ready to go.
Remy?
I really appreciate all the effort, I love seeing the public and private partnerships going forward, and also in the results packet that you gave to us, I noticed the prepaid internships for Lindfield students to engage the zero-waste efforts, and I think that's fantastic as well, the effort of putting in place more willing and educated souls to continue the work. So, I guess my only question, and it doesn't need to be answered, but then what would the next step be?
Pass the ordinance. We're ready.
Scott?
Likewise, I appreciate, and haven't had a chance to have looked through it, but to read it, I will do that, appreciated the material that was presented in our packets, that was, you know, the features of the ordinances in the other communities. I think it's great to do a comparison, to see how we will be set up compared to some of those in the area. A couple of things that I've got is, you know, some of us already shop at a place that doesn't provide bags, and that's Costco. You think about it, they're carrying them, or they're in the, they're in the cart, or their boxes, and that's the way that they're able to recycle their boxes. So, you know, we do participate, whether we know it or not. I think it's an educational process that one would need to really realize the benefits, and then it's just a matter of remembering to bring those reusable bags, and then they tuck right away, you put them in your car when you're done, so they're always there. So, I applaud this approach that has been thoughtful and complete, that'll allow us then to look at an ordinance and have discussion around that.
Thank you, Scott. Just a little, another anecdote, I was reading here a couple of weeks ago, and I can't remember, it was a town of about forty-five thousand, either in Wisconsin or Minnesota, and I can't remember, and they partnered with two of their service clubs, whether it be Kiwanis or the City Club or something like that, and what the City Clubs did, or what the clubs did as a fundraiser for the grade schools, they said for every plastic bag that you bring in, the service clubs will donate one cent to your school or your fund. In six months, they collected over seven hundred thousand not, in one month. And you think about, you get the kids where they can benefit, or a service club, they can benefit to raise stuff, money for their schools, and alls they have to do is go around to their neighbors themselves and gather up these plastic bags and bring them in? Not allowed to do that, and if you look at how many, how many bags you can get off the, out of the market really, really quick, so they just went around to all their neighbors, and they just started collecting all these bags, and they get one cent for every plastic bag they turned in, and they gave away, I think, the first three months, they gave away over like seven thousand dollars to these schools, so, you know, you want to think about that, that's a good option to maybe for Zero Waste to partnering with like a couple of service clubs or something to start a school education program, that might be, not be a bad idea either. But again, I have to really commend you guys, before I was mayor and since I've been mayor, I think the information you've provided us and the way you've ran the organization, the hard work you do to put us to where we are at today is just fantastic, and I don't think we, I just don't see a way we want to stop now.
One more comment, there is a draft ordinance that's been written by Martha, I think she did a very good job to blend in the important features of all the other ordinances that are out there in the state, so I think it's a good ordinance to start with, and we want to make sure it works for you, and you think it works for the city, so now's the time to make the final touches to that ordinance.
Okay, you know, I think if I look at the potential outcomes in what we've got, we have council, basically, three different things we could do tonight, and if the council, which I believe they do, is comfortable with the initiative, with the initiative of what we heard tonight, and feels most issues have been answered, bring back a draft ordinance language, I think it's January 2017, Martha, is what it says here, if the council, or even sooner, even sooner.
Yeah, if they want to go six months, I would recommend that we probably go no later than, we could do it either October 11th or the 25th, and we could use Earth Day as an announcement, and then three days later would be the six-month mark, so we could do it a couple of different ways, but I believe they hit the six months that the group would like, we'll need to do it sometime no later than October 25th.
When is Earth Day?
April 22nd of 2017.
I think then, that's a very good idea, Martha, and if staff has the time, I would recommend, since we already have ordinances, and you've done a lot of work putting the ordinance together, that we aim for maybe addressing that, the second meeting in October, so that six months could take effect in April. The second option we have, if the council feels there's still significant outreach and understanding to, and research to be done, we could ask Zero Waste to come back, or if the council does not think the initiative has further merit, we could just thank the group and their efforts. But I would strongly suggest that we will go with option number one, and we try to get a draft ordinance in front of us the second weekend in October, so we can meet that six-month cutoff for Earth Day, so we really don't have to vote, but you want to make a motion on that, or I don't think we need a motion, go ahead, Remy, go ahead.
So moved to have an ordinance presented to council, second week of October.
Okay, thank you, Remy.
Yeah.
We have a motion, a second, we have a second by Council President Jeffrey, do we have any comments, anything by staff? David, do you have any comments?
You can vote, and then I've got a question.
Okay, if not, then all those in favor, we've had motion, a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show it, pass the council unanimously, and we'll be, second week in October, we'll be having a ordinance put in, put in front of us in the second week, second meeting in October. So, David, do you have a question?
I just, one question, and I know you don't have a copy of the draft ordinance that was put together in front of you yet, but one of the question marks that we had in drafting the ordinance was enforcement. You'll notice in the material that was presented by Zero Waste last time around, two of the, it looked like two of the ordinances had specific language in it related to monetary fines that would be imposed if we got to the point of having a truly non-compliant business. And I don't know if, when you were doing your surveys, if any of the cities actually got to the point of taking, ever having to take enforcement action, or what your thoughts were in that area.
I don't know specifically of any enforcements that have been done in other cities. We did find that in Corvallis, they, it's a complaint-driven system. They do have fines that are specified, but it has to be an external complaint from some customer who says that store's not complying, and then they'll go look at it and then decide if a fine is in order. So, it's a pretty loose system, it's not very strict.
And once again, nothing's perfect in life, but what we're trying to achieve is get rid of the plastic bag, so if someone is...
So if someone is cheating by offering a plastic bag and there is a complaint, that's a pretty easy thing to go and ask them to correct. If someone's obstinate, I doubt there's going to be that many that we need to start enforcing monetary, you know, spending our time and money and effort to do that. But there may be people who are not charging for a smaller paper bag. Oh, well, it's not that big a deal, you know. They're still not using a plastic bag, and that's our point, is to get rid of the plastic bag. So it's never going to be perfect, but I hope you don't, oh, I know you won't get into, you know, a strict enforcement narrative in the ordinance. We'll just do the best we can, and if it becomes a problem in the future, you can always change the ordinance.
Yeah, I think based on Ramsey's initial comments. Go ahead.
You brought up an interesting point about the mandating that they charge for the bags, and some of them might not charge for the paper bags. Was that something that the grocers kind of wanted it to be across the board?
So there's two reasons for that, obviously. Well, there's three reasons. I'll start with, I don't have it that organized in mind, so this may sound a little jumbled. One of the reasons of the three is that when a person comes up and complains about having a five-cent bag, it's great for the merchant to be able to say, well, this is a requirement of the ordinance of the city. I'm not making this random. And in fact, everyone is having to charge five cents. This is a decision that you need to make, and that is, is it mandatory or is it optional? The thinking behind having it mandatory is that everyone will be in the same system, right? And if you, if one store doesn't charge five cents, it gives them an advantage, and it may be a much bigger store, right, that can afford that pass-through. Because frankly, five cents a bag, we're finding, does not necessarily, the cost is not covered completely. But nor is a plastic bag. But there may be a little uptick of money that these merchants are going to have to pay to provide a five-cent bag. There is definitely that possibility. It depends how thrifty the merchant is in shopping for their bags, so.
I think the bottom line, though, was that the grocers in general, that lobby, wanted to see that kind of be branded in the statute so that it's required that they charge. Whether they do or not, I mean, but it was, it kind of made everyone feel a bit more easy to be able to say, even playing field, this is what, this is what Big Brother wants us to charge you.
Right. And then the third reason, of course, is some people object to paying five cents, and then the next time they come to the store, they're with a cloth bag.
Right.
And you've changed behavior.
Makes sense.
Makes sense. Martha, do you have some comments? Do you have a comment?
Alan had a question, too.
Yeah, I'll go down there. Alan, why don't we question, comment from you?
Quick one, just Chamber of Commerce kind of came in my mind. Have you made a presentation in the Chamber of Commerce yet?
So we worked with Martha and the Chamber of Commerce and made them aware of this. And frankly, I thought that that was probably where some interesting conversation, if not opposition, would come. And it's our understanding that they have decided to stand back and are fine with it. I doubt that we're going to get, you know, an endorsement from the Chamber of Commerce. We haven't sought it, but we have been very transparent with them about what we were doing and asked them for any comment or any input from any of their members. And once again, I don't think there's anyone here. So I think we've asked them if they have any objections. And I think they understand the big picture of this is to make McMinnville a healthy business environment, and certainly joining that green trend is great for business.
Thank you.
Martha, you had a couple of comments?
No, Councilor Jeffries hit on, you know, a key topic of the goal or the essence of why, you know, that to put in the Bag It Better campaign and the charge of fee would be is you're trying to influence individuals away from single-use items. On the other side, there is the, do you want to be over-restrictive? So I fully appreciate that argument. But what I'm most amazed about is, as Ramsey and everybody here has said, it was kind of like when we went out for the first marijuana discussions, and I thought for sure that we would just get all this pushback. And there's not been anything really, which has probably surprised me more than anything else when we first started this.
There's strong recyclers around here.
It's very good to hear.
Just have to keep the conversation green.
Well, I think it's also interesting that, you know, with Recology, they came, and, you know, we're looking now at having an opportunity for the organic materials and the glass to be picked up at the curb. I think that's going to be another piece that really is going to help us. The one comment I have is between now and the ordinance being placed into effect, telling the story is really important. And so going through the news register and maybe having an opportunity to be in the viewpoint section of coming from you as compared to the city, I think it would be really important to tell that story prior to all of this happening. I've always been one that if you can tell the story the right way, people understand and you're going to get a lot more acceptance.
Well, when you think about it, the volume or weight of a plastic bag in relation to the rest of the waste that we throw away is minimal. But the perception of what the bag means is so huge. And so Zero Waste McMinnville has been this guttural, hands-on organization to do a lot of really great things. And now we realize we're here to stay. It's working. We know where we need to go. And so we're going to be concentrating more on our own personal messaging and back off a little bit of doing it for you, which means we really have to communicate well, that we're getting the city started, but we need all to work together to actually change our behavior through process and through education. So the bag is really representative of that, and we plan to use that in our PR.
So what I think Ramsey is saying is, that's a great idea, and we should follow up on that.
See, that's why he should have taken all the questions.
And if a store doesn't want to do it, going back to Ramsey's opening comment, we'll just sic Ramsey on him. So any more questions or discussions? If not, then we'll see a, we'll see an ordinance in front of us on the 26th, second meeting in October.
Yes.
Or, so, but if not before. So we'll get that done. Thank the three of you again. Great counsel, we have a couple of resolutions tonight. The first one is Resolution 2016-64. That'd be ratifying a contract with express employment personnel. So Martha, if you want to give us a staff report on that one, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Currently, our finance department is experiencing three personnel vacancies. So this, both of these resolutions are dealing with trying to deal with those vacancies. Right now, we, our accountant one, which is our payroll technician, our accounts payable technician, excuse me, accountant two, which does our CAFER work with our audit as well as our asset management, and then for our part-time ambulance billing. The first one, resolution, is, as I mentioned, is the lead-off. And it is for a contract that will allow us to temporarily fill that accounts payable position, the accountant one, with express employment professionals. We intend to make this temporary, as we are focusing on getting the accountant one position's permanent backfill in place by mid-November. But in the meantime, it's one of those positions that folks like to have their bills paid, and so we really can't gap the position. Fortunately, Express Temps has an individual that may sound familiar to many of you here, and that is Ginger Williams. She was a former manager at MDA. And on top of it, she knows municipalities, and she had 12 years as a counselor in Carrollton. So we really look forward to getting her, working with us. And also, it works very well because she intends in November to go and become a snowbird. And so it's good for her, and we really look forward to bringing her on board for a temporary measure to allow us time to hire a backfill for our accounts payable position.
Okay, we heard the report from the city manager. Any discussion? No discussion at all? Okay, if there's no discussion at all, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2016-64, ratifying a contract with express employment professionals. So moved by Councilor Mankey, our Councilor Drapkin, second by Councilor Mankey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that the motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Martha, that'll take us to Resolution Number 2016-65. And that'll be approving entering into a contract with TKW or Talbot Corvola and Warwick LLP for accounting services, so. I take it that Martha, you're going to do that one, too?
Indeed, as Marsha is on a well-deserved vacation this week. Generally, the city and the finance department, we prepare the city's fiscal year and financial statements using both a combination of staff accountants and then a part-time certified public accountant that we bring on just for the CAFER process. This year, though, due to the fact that our accountant two position has been vacant for a while, we would like to go ahead and backfill that position as it's time to start the CAFER with an individual from Talbot, Corvola, and Warwick, which I believe, once again, you will be very familiar with. As our, since Rob Moody no longer is our audit firm, this allows him to come back and work on the actual preparation. So he is offered, for he himself to come and give us the support we need to get the CAFER kicked out the door. And so we really look forward, pending your approval, to working again with Mr. Moody.
Great guy, great guy. So any questions from the council?
I can just say that we had an audit committee meeting this last week where Marsha went over the express temporary services position and this, and gave us a good understanding of that, both Kelly and I. And so I can support what's happening. And it's exciting to have Rob come out and do some real work for once.
Does he know he's really going to have to do some real work this time? Okay, any more questions? Remy, you have any? Okay, Alan?
Yes, sir.
Let's go down to this, and Larry, Kelly, Kevin?
Nope.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion then that we approve Resolution Number 2016-65, approving entering into a contract with Talbot Corvola and Warwick LLP for accounting services.
So moved?
Moved by Councilor Hill. Do I have a second? Second by Councilor Mankey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that the motion passed unanimously. Thank you, councilors. And now that takes us into our advice and information items. So is there anything that the council would like to talk about? Let's start down with you, Alan. Anything to bring up?
No, I can't think of anything right now.
You're still, we're getting rough for that sunny, warm Arizona weather. So you're just not back into it yet, are you?
Coming to life slowly.
Slowly for life. Remy, how about you?
Tomorrow will be the meeting of the McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force. And after a much-vetted process of looking at the practice of SDC, historical SDC discounts, the intention is to make a recommendation that will make its way to council of how to continue and potentially expand or potentially not expand, depending on how the meeting goes, that practice, so.
Okay, thanks for all the effort you put into that, Remy. It's definitely appreciated and definitely needed.
Scott?
On the 7th of September, we had our McMinnville Urban Renewal Committee meeting, and we talked about the funding of the piece that we're going to go ahead and put towards the Alpine project. We're looking at a bank placement that seems to be a cheaper way of going about doing that as compared to issuing a bond that looks well under 3%. And we might, we're probably going to do it in conjunction with some other things, so there will be some economies of scale. The other thing we talked a little bit about was, you know, we're using quite a bit of our capacity to repay for Alpine. But under Heather's direction, we talked about really looking forward and putting some priority. We're not going to have much of a cash flow until 2021 is when the cash will start becoming more available for us to do some other things. But we really want to put a priority of the top two, three, or four, or three, four, or five items out there so that we can be looking forward and we can be working on those a bit. So we'll be bringing and having a discussion around those priorities. Monday, we also had a committee meeting off of the Visit McMinnville, which is called the Wayfair Committee, which is how do we address signage and directions within this community that are in unison to get us where we need to go? We have Yamhill County Tourism that is in control of some grant money that will be available in April. And the total amount's probably over $100,000, and it's for wayfaring. And so we're putting together a group of some individuals on the Visit McMinnville, but some other partners out there. So we had a great group around the table. And we've made a commitment to do some research, hire consultants, and be prepared for that April 2017 deadline to put a grant request out, to bring some money in. And it's going to be phased how we look at it, you know, the design, the placement, all of those types of things we're going to be looking at so that we can, as we're, you know, doing the enhancement to this community, how do we get our visitors to where they want to go? And so some really good discussions. It was our first meeting. We have been very aggressive. We're going to be meeting every two weeks until we can get this grant prepared. And it reminds me of the focus and the passion that the Visit McMinnville Committee had initially, where we were almost meeting weekly to get our feet off the ground. So some good things from that perspective.
Travel Yamhill Valley, is that, are you working with Gary Kubiak's group?
I...
Which one was that, sir?
For the Wayfair Committee with Yamhill Valley? Is that Gary Kubiak's?
Yamhill County Tourism?
Yamhill County Tourism?
Oh, I don't know. I don't think Jeff has ever said exactly who he's working with or...
It's probably Gary Kubiak, I think.
The kicker or the quarterback, the coach?
So Kevin, what's new with you?
Not much. It's quiet at the cog.
Good. Kelly?
Having a quiet summer at Wycom, too.
Good, that's always good. So Larry?
Well, we met, bypassed that here on September 1st because we had, we shifted our schedule a little bit. But so, no, and there's a lot of things to say about the bypass other than it appears to be on schedule. But one of the things that impressed me was how the county stepped up in increasing the funds for lobbying. You know, we gave extra here and so many others did, too, so that we could go with the full-force lobbying in Washington, D.C., and Salem to try to get more money going and more transportation grant money. So I was really pleased with the way the county, the whole county as a whole, the different entities stepped up.
Yeah, it looks like with, because we've been able to do that, there's a program through the National Transportation Association that they've, Michelle Jaguar found in Washington, that we may be able to, because of that additional lobbying, having a full lobbying place, we may be able to take advantage of about another $2.5 million that we didn't know which was available. So that definitely pays for lobbies if you get $2.5 million. But yeah, the county stepped up and they paid everything. And McMinnville Industrial Promotions also stepped up their share quite significantly. Okay, let's go around the table. So Rich, anything from the FD?
Nothing further from us.
Yeah, okay. Dennis, anything from the PD? All right, Mr. IT?
IT's great, too.
So Rose, I suppose you're going to say everything is just great.
Right, we've hired.
Great and busy, I imagine. So David?
Busy.
Martha?
Busy.
Okay. Do we have anything? Do we have anything else to come in front of us tonight from the council staff? Meeting adjourned.